This is the appointed time and we have a quorum. The special FC for the afternoon session begins now. The first session, well, and together with the second session will last till seven thirty. The purpose is to examine the draft estimates twenty nineteen to make sure that the expenditure will not exceed the the allocation available for the implementation of policies. All the questions must be related to the policies. And please quote the reply serial number before you put the question. If members are unable to follow up on their written questions at this meeting, you can further the questions at the panel meetings or on other occasions. Let me welcome the Labor for Secretary and Welfare and his team to our meeting. This session is about welfare and women. As for the government spending on labor, this will be dealt with in the next session. I will invite the secretary to give us a short five-minute presentation. Please, over to you. Chairman, members. I think members have received my speech. I'm not going to read it out in full, I will only highlight some salient points. In twenty nineteen twenty, government recurrent spending on social welfare and women's interests is estimated to be eighty-four point three billion dollars, accounting for nineteen point one percent of total recurrent government expenditure. For elderly care, the recurrent government expenditure on elderly services is estimated to reach about one, uh, ten point six billion dollars, an increase of about twenty-three percent over the revised estimates last year. Apart from providing more R C G places and subsidized daycare places, the government will also allocate additional resources to implement various initiatives on enhancing elderly services put forth in the twenty eighteen policy address. This includes additional five thousand E A one places under the enhanced more place scheme, one thousand additional places or two thousand service quotas under the enhanced home and community care services, one thousand vouchers under the community care service voucher for the elderly, and also increasing the designated residential respite places in private R C Gs. On families and children, we would like to strengthen childcare services by improving the manning ratio of childcare centers, increasing the level of subsidy and providing additional aided C C C places and enhance the service of the neighborhood support childcare project. Starting from last year through the lottery fund, the government has been providing social work services for about one hundred and fifty thousand preschool children in over seven hundred subsidized or aided C C Cs, kindergartens and kindergartens come C C Cs. As for support for separated or divorced parents, starting from this year, the government will set up five co-parenting support centers in Hong Kong. There will also be enhancements of youth services. Starting from twenty eight nineteen eighteen, the number of social, school social workers will be increased from one point two to two in some four hundred and sixty secondary schools. In relation to enhance support for preschool children with special needs and their parents, in particular, after regularizing onsite preschool rehabilitation services, starting from October this year, we hope to further increase the number of places to seven thousand. In the next school year, we will also enhance professional and support services provided under the O P R S. On enhancing community support and residential care services, the S W D will gradually set up five additional district support centers. That is to increase number from sixteen to twenty-one, and there will also be two additional support centers for persons with autism, and also manpower will be strengthened. On mental health services, there will be increase of the manpower of professional professional and support in all integrated community care, uh, community centers for mental wellness to cover secondary school students with mental health needs as well. About social security. The estimated total recurring expenditure of the social security allowance and C S S A scheme is about fifty-four billion dollars, a significant increase of forty-six percent as compared with the period five years ago. The amount also represents twelve percent of recurrent government expenditure. As for the higher old age living allowance, it was implemented last year, and it has already become the social security program with the highest number of elderly recipients aged sixty-five or above. About four hundred and eighty thousand elderly persons are receiving the high allowance at the moment. That is three thousand five hundred and eighty-five. And altogether, we have normal O L A, about sixty thousand recipients. So we are covering some five hundred and forty thousand elderly persons aged sixty-five or above. And in the beginning of next year, we're going to expand the scheme to cover those retiring in Guangdong and Fujian. Members are also concerned about two hundred, uh, two, uh, twenty billion dollars which will be allocated to implement an initiative for the government to purchase suitable premises from the market for the provision of accommodation in operating welfare facilities, which involve more than one hundred and thirty. We will consult the panel on welfare service later, and we will seek funding approval from the Finance Committee. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Shu Kachan, just take your chairman four minutes. First question relating to zero zero five five about the workshop for the blind. According to the government's answer, the factory for the blind of Hong Kong society, it will be redeveloped to become a complex and for the provision block, uh, complex, it will comprise several other facilities except for the workshop or factory for the blind. According to the service agreement, for the factory for the blind, it isn't, it doesn't just exist in name. It is an actual kind of service, and it is clearly stipulated that there should be actual work for the blind. And I emphasize, we're talking about actual work, not just training. And about the redevelopment of the factory for the blind premises, I want to know what workshop arrangements would be provided. And if this is scrapped, I want the S S W D to tell me how this will be followed up on. Second question, very briefly, about zero zero eight one. I, I noticed from the administration's reply that the government plans to conduct a consultancy study to review the regimes for R C Gs and R C Ds. In June twenty seventeen, the S W D set up a working group to follow up on the amendments to the two pieces of regulations. I want to know whether this review will be overlapping with the work of the working group. What about this consultancy study? Does it cover per capita living space, manning ratio, and licensing and regulatory regimes? Which study outcome will be more, uh, will be given more weight? Third question, I think many people will be asking this question. That is zero zero nine six about the twenty billion dollars to be allocated for the procurement of properties. According to the administration's reply, the properties procured will not be used as R C Gs for various reasons. Social welfare facilities, however, will come under the special accommodation under new developments. For new developments, are we talking about new housing estates or rather P R H estates? Do we call, um, will they be accommodated in, in a community centers and complexes? Because starting from twenty seventeen, we have had some twenty-two new housing estates, but only eight of them have reserved a floor or some space for R C Gs, and only five hundred and ten subsidized places have been provided. And we still have some thirty thousand elderly applicants waiting in line. So how will the additional R C G places be provided under the new developments? Secretary, about the first question, factory for the blind, we are discussing with the relevant concerned groups. We explained to them that after redevelopment, the employees will remain the same. They will not turn from, uh, they, they, they will not be turned from being employees to being trainees. So about the nitty-gritty of the factory's operation, we can further discuss later. About the consultancy study. The working group on review of the two ordinances will be reporting to panel members and to take views from members. About the legislative proposals, the Labor and Welfare Bureau will be in charge of that in due course. And about the consultancy study, basically, it covers the overall licensing and regulatory regime, and it shouldn't overlap with the work of the working group. About the last question, Mr. Shu referred to housing estate developments that were planned before that. In fact, after twenty oh eight, there is no racial in relation to social services in the Hong Kong P S G. But in the end of last year, in fact, the requirement was reinstated. That is why in the up-and-coming housing estates, such facilities will be required to be provided. And like Mr. Shu Kachan said, we will look for space for the provision of welfare services, such as space in the, uh, sites in the land sale program, new P R H states, et cetera. Mr. Ronny Chan, four minutes. I'd like to follow up on, um, Ms. Alice Mac's question, reply number nineteen. According to the government's reply, all non-official members appointed by the government in advisory and statutory bodies, male and female proportion, um, was roughly seventy to thirty. That means it doesn't meet the thirty-five percent threshold. And in annex one, there are twenty-eight A S Bs without female-appointed non-official member. And then annex two, A S Bs with proportion of female-appointed non-official members less than thirty-five percent. There is a long list. One, um, one is the I C A C Commission, and I'm also a member. And there is also, um, there is also another A S B relating to banks. Well, for the plumbing trade or, um, seafarers, well, these are male-dominated industries. That accounts for the high proportion of male members. Now for, um, say Advisory Council on Matters Relating to AIDS, and also another A S B relating to educators. Oh, these are rather gender-neutral industries. And yet all the appointed non-official members are male. Not even a single female has been appointed. So in terms of the male-female ratio in a list of candidates for appointment, there is already a bias. That means female candidates are more likely to be rejected or more likely to reject the appointments. Is that the case? Because they have other engagements? Is there any objective for the government to, say, invite predominantly female candidates to take up appointments? Was to narrow the gap? Let me take your answer. First of all, I do not have statistics relating to male or female candidates rejecting our invitation. I understand there is an apparent difference. Well, like the honorable member said, it is true for some industries and the related A S Bs, it may be difficult to invite female to, to join the A S Bs members. In other arenas, however, we hope to have as many female members as possible. So, um, for the, for those reaching thirty-five percent, some of them actually had fifty percent female members. What about the long-term solution? I thank the member for the concern. I think now that the lists are in annexes one and two, the departments are aware of the situation, and they will naturally consider balancing the gender mix in making appointments. Next, Dr. Helena Wong. Next, Chairman, I'd like to follow up on zero zero two three six about childcare service. Well, in the annex, I see that there are a number of tables, such as aided standalone C C Cs or whole-day childcare centers in six districts, Southern Islands, Wong Tai Sin, Taipu, et cetera. There isn't even a single service quota. In other districts where there are quotas, the average use utilization rate is one hundred percent. What is, what it shows is that there is a demand for childcare service in every district.
However, there are no figures on, um, the number of people waiting. So does the government know how many people are waiting in different districts? Among the twenty billion dollars' worth of properties the L W B is about to purchase, how many childcare service places can you provide in various districts? Right now, a lot of families are reluctant to have children because they do not know who can take care of their child. We have no, we do not keep any figures on the number of people who are waiting for the services in different districts. In the coming year, we will introduce more than three hundred service places, and we would focus on districts that are currently lacking. And, um, among the properties to be purchased with twenty billion dollars, these include childcare centers. We will focus on districts where services are relatively lacking. And when you look at the annex, in some districts, um, there are zero C C Cs, so hopefully, uh, well, we will be able to provide services in different districts. The number of people waiting is important because if the current utilization rate is one hundred percent in a specific district, the relevant N G Os should keep such figures. So the government should approach these N G Os to see how many people are waiting. These numbers should be available. These numbers will show the level of demand in different districts. And when the government eventually purchases the twenty billion dollars' worth of properties, are you going to be absolutely even among different districts? Or are you going to purchase more properties in districts that see a higher demand? I wonder whether you have such plans. I asked how many service places you will introduce, and you said there will be about three hundred. Is that the case? What is your plan? Um, perhaps I mix up both parts. In the coming year, there will be three hundred extra places according to the budget, and these do not include the standalone C C Cs we are going to purchase under the twenty billion dollar allocation. So under the twenty billion dollar budget, how many new daycare centers can you provide? We hope that services can be provided among the eighteen districts. But as for the actual distribution among them, we would have to look at the relevant numbers. But having said that, please bear in mind that the facilities we can eventually purchase might not be the same as the ones we plan. Among the new properties, how many new childcare service places can be provided? Can you give us an approximate number? At the panel on welfare services, we will outline the details to members. Mr. Roy Kwong, four minutes. Thank you.
I want to ask about question two two six, and that is about the employment scheme for the middle, middle-aged and elderly. And in twenty eighteen, about ten thousand people register for the employment service of the Labor Department, and about two thousand were successful. Earlier, a scavenger called Mrs. Wong complained to the secretary at an earlier meeting, and she complained that she was rejected by more than ten employers. So, um, you are asking people to seek help from the Labor Department. I, should you correct that, or do you think a success rate of about ten percent is good enough? Chairman.
This question belongs to the next session. There, there is no releva, there's no relevant information in, in this document. Well, this is something I see on this paper under the E P M. He asks about a specific case, and I do not know whether this is the right occasion to address that. But if you do not mind, I can say that that specific lady has touched base with us, and we have approached her subsequently as well. The question is about the services you provide to the public. And according to the figures last year, eleven thousand people aged fifty or above sought help from the Labor Department, but only about ten percent were successful. So the, the success rate was seventeen percent. Secretary, are you satisfied with this number?
The figure of seventeen percent refers to the proportion of successful job seekers who are sixty to sixty-four. And among the two thousand odd cases, about four hundred people aged sixty to sixty-four were employed successfully. So my, our question is whether the government's current policy is enough. If the figures are relatively low, shouldn't we review the policy? And according to the reply here, the, the government said they are providing on-the-job training for six to twelve weeks, and there are job fairs for the elderly and middle-aged. But would this truly benefit the elderly? Due to age, they face different degrees of discrimination. So I wonder whether the secretary can provide more information or plans on how we can improve the situation. If you want to see more figures, I'm happy to provide them. In two thousand and seven, for the employment, employed population between sixty and sixty-four, there were eighty-five thousand. By twenty seventeen, the figure grew to twenty-two point seven, seven thousand dollars. And by the end of last year, it further grew to two hundred and fifty-five point four thousand. If not for the employed elderly, our working force might have been shrinking already. So we will certainly offer support to this segment so that they could be employed. Well, I'm sure the secretary knows the numbers very well. So my question is, um, are you not going to, are you going to correct the claim that the Labor Department is all-powerful? Well, I didn't make this claim. Miss Doctor, this is quite. For twenty nineteen to twenty, the government will set up five co-parenting centers in Hong Kong to support separated families and their children for separated families, especially families with single parents. Some very often, the mothers find it very hard to recover the alimony or the maintenance fees. So would these centers offer support in this regard for families with single parents? And we propose setting up a department or unit to help separated couples recover the maintenance payments. And in terms of childcare service, well, the government does not know how many people require or need these childcare services in different districts. So I think for, I think the government must realize that families with children of different ages need services, and respite service is also important. If the government does not know how many families need these services in different districts, then you could not plan properly for the services. For example, in Sha Tin, the population is high, but there are no childcare places for infants under the age of two. And for primary school students, after-school respite service is also needed. So for the twenty billion dollar allocation, how much resources would be granted to childcare and primary students for maintenance payments? As I understand, the Home Affairs Bureau and Family Council are conducting a study on maintenance payments. And hopefully, by early next year, results would be available, and the government will explore the situation. For the five co-parenting centers, the, their proposed function does not include recovery of maintenance payments. But when they offer assistance to the relevant families, I believe they can provide referral service or offer information as needed. Dr. Helena Wong asked about the number of people waiting for services at the standalone C C Cs, and we do not keep such figures. As for childcare services, we completed a consultancy study at the end of last year, and we estimated the service demand for children aged between two and three in Hong Kong. And like we said at the Welfare Services Panel, we hope to complete a review of the relevant standards in the coming year. So we do have some ballpark figures on the demand levels for services in Hong Kong. Nonetheless, there is a huge gap between supply and demand in services at the moment, and we would do our best in introducing these facilities. So childcare centers are an important part of our earmarked allocation. Mr. Johnson Ho. Chairman. Government services seldom utilized completely. In my question, question nine, we can see that the government services are extremely popular, especially full-time childcare service. Well, but it doesn't mean that utilization in, in every district is one hundred percent. And the government will introduce four hundred places in the coming year. And before twenty fourteen, Mr. Matthew Chang said there would be one thousand places, but they are now nowhere to be seen. So doesn't mean that in total you introduce fourteen hundred service places in order to fulfill the government's pledge? So I'd like to know the government's determination. It has been five years since twenty fourteen for many new housing estates, and the S W, S W D's new buildings intake were completed, but no extra places were introduced. Does it mean the government did not care? I think for the two dollar, two-dollar transfer fare concession scheme, I think the take-up rate is also a hundred percent. I wonder whether we can do more, do even more to promote elderly employment. For example, by relaxing the age threshold to sixty, I think the extra expenditure is only one billion dollars. But can this help boost our productivity? Secretary. For the new standalone C C C places, the number has already included the one thousand places promised by the former secretary, Mr. Matthew Chang. And in the coming year, these one thousand places will be made available in phases apart from the four new childcare centers in the coming years, or in the next two years. And we will see five hundred more places. And we will see five hundred more places by the third and fourth year. So in terms of the level of commitment of the government, like I told Dr. Zizwicke, we will try to introduce some more of these facilities. As for the twenty billion dollar allocation, on the first of April, we just started the second phase to the special welfare scheme for sites for welfare processes and these facilities are included. We hope that NGOs would make the best use of their sites, including setting up more CCCs.
Two-dollar concessionary transport fare, I've answered this a number of times. Basically, we are reviewing this concessionary fare scheme. We hope by the beginning of next year, there'll be an outcome. Let me remind you that in your reply, you mentioned expanding the type of transports to be covered. But you have not included the lowering of the age threshold. And about redevelopment of Yuman Square in Kun Tong, I don't see the SWD giving an active response about the provision of facilities there. So please give some pressure to your subordinates. Mister Owen Young, four minutes. Zero zero six-three, a question asked by Doctor Fernando Zheng. I'd like to refer to annex two. I have a question for the secretary about the average waiting time for R C H D places for hostel for more, or rather severely mentally handicapped persons. In twenty sixteen-seventeen, it was ninety-three point three weeks. In twenty seventeen-eighteen, one hundred and seventy-eight severely mentally handicapped. Again, from one hundred and four, one hundred and fourteen point three to one hundred and sixty-eight. This isn't really an insightful figure. What is your view, Secretary? This question is about waiting time. The, both the demand and supply is not substantial, are not substantial. That accounts for the great fluctuations of the figures and also the sudden surge of the waiting time. It's a matter of proportion. With just a change of a dozen places or persons, the number of weeks or months would change drastically. We hope to reduce the average waiting time in near future. Chairman, I'd like to put this to the secretary. Do you mean that the base figure is small? And that the figure now we see will greatly fluctuate accordingly? Because I take the secretary's logic to be sound, let's take a hostel for severely physically handicapped persons as an example. I agree that perhaps between twenty thirteen-fourteen or fourteen-fifteen, because of change in the base figure, the waiting time also changed very drastically. But anyway, one hundred and seventy-eight is still a rather unsettling figure. Can you tell us whether there are ways to reduce the average waiting time as much as possible? About these two items and the average waiting time, several years ago, the administration already took a close look for development projects in the pipeline. We seek to provide services in those premises with longer waiting time and the developments will be completed in due course. Another question, Special Needs Trust Scheme. Three oh one, I'd like to ask about professional support for the Special Needs Trust Scheme. However, the answer is quite vague. I'd like to seek the administration's enlightenment about the operation of the trust scheme and whether we can see some results. Maybe I will invite the Rehabilitation Commissioner to give you more information. David. Thank you. About the Special Needs Trust Scheme, at the end of March, the SWD just launched this service. The office has received a lot of inquiries. And the S and T office has been briefing parents and stakeholder groups about the scheme. There are, however, considerations from the applicant's perspective. We just started in March. It may need some time for parents to familiarize themselves with the program. Let me just supplement, Chairman. On manpower issue, we'd like to keep things flexible. As we build more cases, we can then increase manpower. We have allocation for manpower, but we do not want to start with a big establishment. We believe the manpower situation will continue to change over the years. Doctor Fernando Zheng, four minutes. About R C H D, I'm surprised to hear from the secretary that there are great variations because of the small base figure. As a parent, I have been monitoring the figures for a long time. We're talking about over ten years of waiting time. I don't know when the base has changed. For hostel for severely mentally handicapped persons, according to the SWD's website, under normal circumstances, for an applicant to get an offer, or Hong Kong Island is twenty-twenty-two, Hong Kong Island is where I live, in Kowloon, twenty, two thousand or two, twenty oh two, twenty oh one, that's the time of application, we're talking about seventeen or nineteen years. It's beyond belief. So that's the average, fourteen years. While we do have exceptions, for example, both parents may have passed away and there would be expeditions arrangements. We're talking about August twenty-seventeen, so that's over one and a half years. In the most urgent cases, the waiting time would still be one and a half years. We're talking about the most disadvantaged group. They need hostels. However, we've seen recently the general trend is that things are getting worse. We're having more and more applicants with longer and longer waiting time. This is undeniable. Well, Secretary, you say that in the future, this will be addressed. But do you have a plan? Can you explain to us whether you have a timetable? Do you have a roadmap? In relation to the hostel for all the handicapped persons? Secretary. About clearing the queue, we have a lot of uncertainties. It's really hard to say as of now. But as you know, in Kun Tong, we have a shine skills center and in this financial year, it will be commissioned and hostel places will also be increased accordingly, which is an issue close to heart of Doctor Zheng. For larger hostels, when Silam project is completed and when intake begins, there will be more places available. We're talking about addressing the shortage of places in the number of hundreds. So we will be able to shorten the average waiting time. All right, Chairman, I'd like to follow up on home care and daycare elderly services. Fifty-six and sixty-five. In these two questions, we're talking about the I H C S, Integrated Home Care Services and Enhanced Home and Community Care Services, E H C C S. About the waiting time, it used to be some two thousand, but in this year, it's seven thousand eight hundred. The average waiting time has increased from nine to eighteen months. For daycare centers, the, in twenty fourteen, the average waiting time was seven months, now it's twelve months. Number of applicants also grew exponentially to four thousand. Well, you talked about home care services for the elderly or aging in place. I don't know how this is actually implemented. These services are really important because it provides an alternative for the elderly persons to stay in the community without having the need to live in a home. The waiting time, however, is getting longer. Well, how are you actually going to implement the policy of aging in place? Chairman, in my opening remarks, I referred to the increase in the service quotas for community care places. I'm not going to repeat it. In twenty seventeen, we devised the elderly service care plan and since then, we have been sparing no effort in improving community and home care. We hope to enhance service level on all fronts, but there is a bottleneck and that is manpower. For example, we have a pilot scheme and we'd like to introduce a scheme to the whole territory. But in the end, we're only able to provide transitional support in three H A clusters. For the four other clusters, the problem is we cannot engage an organization suitable for providing the service. So in this year's budget, for example, we are going to increase the community care voucher places from six thousand to seven thousand, up by some sixteen percent. And also for enhanced home and community care services, we have an increase of twenty-eight percent. We are providing an addition of two thousand places. So what we can do is to gradually increase our service level. Mister Pun Siopeng. Thank you, Chairman. Reply zero number two four nine. About the navigation scheme for young persons in care services, according to the answer, the SWD will provide one thousand two hundred training places under the navigation scheme. And there will also be enhancement measures to increase the age range and also raising the salaries. The expenditure involved will be around two hundred and sixty-six million dollars. So how are you going to expand the age range? And also, by raising the salaries, how much do you have in mind? And when this will be rolled out? That's the first question. Next. Reply zero number two five six. About childcare training program for grandparents on a pilot basis. According to the paper, the pilot project on childcare training for grandparents has been warmly received. And in twenty nineteen, the SWD will launch a similar program. This is a new program and there will be a provision of four point four million dollars and will provide about one thousand two hundred training places. The previous provision for the previous program was three point three million dollars with the cost of each participant being five thousand six hundred dollars. Under the new training program, if you have one thousand two hundred training places under the same unit cost, there should be six point seven million dollars. Does it mean that with a provision of about four point four million dollars, you won't be able to provide twelve hundred training places? Can you explain the figures? Reply zero number two five four. About R C H Es. According to your reply on the inspections conducted on R C H Es, there are sixty-eight professional or dedicated inspectors for the inspection of R C H Es. And on a yearly basis, you conducted some five thousand inspections. You hired eight retirees from discipline services. Does it mean that altogether you only have seventy-six inspectors or sixty-eight inspectors? In twenty nineteen, after the round of inspection, there were twenty-nine convicted non-compliant cases. Was there any case that involved a single R C H with multiple convictions? About the navigation scheme, as per our reply, next year, we will extend the program by two more years. For the integrity, I think that more details will be implemented and disclosed after we discuss with the stakeholders closer to time. About the unit cost for this training program for grandparents, as a matter of cost projection, we consider how many, how much resources we need for providing twelve hundred training places. I think it's a matter of economy of scale. Previously, we provided six hundred places and five hundred and eighty-nine trainees participated. We hope to increase the places to one thousand two hundred in the future. So I think it's just economy of scale. As for inspections of R C H Es, I defer to the SWD. They can tell you whether the sixty-eight professional inspectors included the retired discipline service officers. And for the conviction cases, it's possible that one R C H has carried more than one conviction.
Director, for the sixty-eight professional inspectors, they are staff of the SWD. Well, for the eight retired discipline services officer, they were hired on a contract basis. They would not be alone in the inspections and their role is to aid our staff. In terms of the number of convictions, as you, as we see, the convictions apply to different R C H Es. Mister Gary Fan.
I want to ask about zero zero eighty-seven. On the purchase of sixty properties with twenty billion dollars and many members asked the same question and they asked for details, yet the government refused to divulge. And this does not help dispel doubts that the government is transferring interest to the business sector. And buying sixty properties with twenty billion dollars mean that each property would cost three hundred million dollars. So for experienced business property agents, they can anticipate what kind of properties the government is going after and they would refuse to lower the prices and this would drive up the prices. And my question is, would the government use its own vacant sites or properties? So for G I C sites in the land sale program, they were all sold off by the government. Why are they purchasing private business properties or premises instead? And in the capital works account, I saw that under subhead three oh oh one S G, the government has earmarked the funding. Why can't the government provide information like G F A distribution standards, etc.? I'm not asking for the exact address. Why aren't you even providing such details? Are you going to wait till June? Thank you. First, the second part of the question. And this project can only be made possible upon approval of the Finance Committee and we are preparing the details. As you know, in the past month or so, we focus on answering the more than thirteen hundred questions for the Finance Committee's special meetings. And for the project, we need to compile a lot of information for Leshco. We wanted to get this done as soon as possible. But at the earliest, we would only be able to submit a proposal to the Welfare Services Panel and Finance Committee after compiling the information. And as Mister Fan knows, for any government side or public side, we are trying to introduce more welfare facilities. So for the coming Welfare Services Panel meeting, we will furnish the details. So for the coming welfare services panel meeting, we will furnish the details. And these include government sites that can be developed, including abandoned school campuses, and they can be converted to welfare use. And these also include welfare facilities stipulated by the land sale agreements. So for some private sites, including private sites owned by the government, they would be redeveloped or converted to provide for more welfare facilities. Mr. Ajun, thank you.
I want to ask about question sixty-eight on the average waiting time for subsidized residential care places. And I wanted to know the number of people who have passed away while waiting. Last term, Mr. Matthew Cheng was the secretary for labor and welfare. Many members, including Mr. Raymond Wong, criticized him heavily. In twenty fourteen to fifteen, three thousand six hundred and sixty-one passed away. And twenty sixteen to seventeen, three thousand six hundred, twenty seventeen to eighteen, four point six thousand. So the numbers are growing. For twenty eighteen, for the first nine months, three thousand four hundred people passed away. And I wonder if the total number would exceed four thousand six hundred and eighty-four for the previous year. Since the number of places is limited, it is impossible to clear the queue completely. But we can see that the number of waitlisted persons who pass away every year is rising. So in the coming years, can the secretary ensure that the numbers don't further swell? For the elderly, they cannot secure a place till the day they pass away. And this, well, even my mother is waiting for a place. It's not about money, but the service quality. And that is why many people are reluctant to stay in private elderly homes. So in order for the waiting time to come down, more people would pass away. Of course, this is not something you would wish. So for the elderly people who have passed away while waiting, did they die of natural causes? Or is there anything you can do for them while they are waiting? For the first question, I have addressed that at the welfare services panel meetings in the past. The current RCHs might have earmarked certain services a long time ago. So the services we see now were planned a long time ago. And like I said in my opening address, in the next five years, we want to introduce one thousand bought places every year for a total of five thousand, and that is equivalent to fifty RCHs. This is something we are targeting. This is challenging because it is very hard to purchase five thousand places with a quality that we would accept. But this is already the fastest way to reach our goal. And like I said in the past at Web SSS panel meeting, I'm afraid that the waiting, the number of people waiting might grow for the next few years. So I think the blame is not on the current secretary because nothing can be changed overnight. But I hope that this can at least be reviewed and ensure that the quality of the bought places is up to the government standards. Do you have anything to add? No. Dr. Chen Zhong-tai, four minutes. Thank you.
I want to ask about question number twenty-eight. And this is also relevant to questions three three two to three three four. And this is related to the transport concessionary scheme for PWDs. According to the government's figures, under the scheme, the expenditure in recent years is about eight hundred and seventy million dollars, and this year is expected to be nine hundred and seventy million dollars. I support welfare measures for our elderly people, and they should certainly be enhanced, especially with RCHs. But in my recent visits to Timun and Yunlong, I received some complaints from the elderly people. While these are, we are not talking about local elderly citizens. But for bus, minibus, empty services, etc., there might be a gray area in the purchase of octopus cards, or there could be a loophole in the system. Well, they saw a lot of elderly people who were tourists, and they enjoyed a two-dollar concessionary fare when they used public transport. As you know, you can purchase an elderly octopus card at convenience stores. And some local citizens complained to me, and they said there's a similar scheme in Macau. And but in Macau, the relevant cards carry photo IDs, and their social welfare agency would monitor the situation. And there is, there is regulation, whereas in Hong Kong, you can easily buy one from seven eleven. And there are some concerns from our local elderly citizens that this scheme might be abused by cross-boundary elderly visitors. So when you review the scheme, did you, were you aware of such problems? We heard a number of similar views in our review of the scheme, and one of the key areas is to prevent abuse. We did consider whether elderly citizens must use and use a personalized octopus card. But if we only begin the process now, the work might take ten years to complete because there are constraints to the application of such octopus cards. But having said that, we will see how we can tackle this issue. Chairman, I hope the scheme would be enhanced. We have received complaints from local elderly citizens for coach or minibus services. Fair often, anyone can enjoy the two-dollar fare by producing an elderly octopus card, and the problem is getting more serious, so this must be tackled. Mr. Lan Yuchong.
The secretary said a multi-front approach would be adopted in providing more welfare facilities, and twenty billion dollars will be spent to purchase facilities or sites. Some people are concerned that this would lead to a hike in market prices. And another concern is whether the government would purchase idle properties, which would also affect the market. The secretary said details would be offered in the future at welfare services panel meetings among the one hundred and thirty services. And many of them are related to childcare centers. So location is very important. Have you considered that if the facilities are not accessible, they would not be welcomed by parents?
So would this be a major consideration in selecting properties to be procured? Secretary, second point, it's four hundred and eighty thousand elderly people are on higher OALA, and sixty thousand elderly recipients are receiving two thousand, some two thousand six hundred dollars a month, the normal OALA. So four hundred and eighty thousand elderly people. How many of them have moved their assets so that they become eligible? At the moment, for the normal OALA, there are only sixty thousand recipients. So will you scrap the cap of two hundred and twenty thousand asset limit and introduce a blanket threshold so that elderly recipients over the age of sixty-five can all get to three thousand five hundred plus dollars? The simple answer is that, well, of course, we're going to give more details to the panel in due course. Transport is a major consideration, especially for childcare services. If it is not accessible, the utilization rate will be very low. And our procurement will not be meeting our service objective. By accessibility, we don't mean somewhere in the middle of a busy street. In Costway Bay, for example, we procure the property which can be used as a childcare center. Costway Bay basically is a very busy street, but district. It is accessible, albeit not a very busy street. We need to consider all these factors. Price is also another important factor. For some locations, if it is in a busy district, we may not wish to spend too much public money on it. Another question on the maximum or the income or asset limit, there is no plan at this stage to carry out the review. No plan so far, but is there a plan? Because some sixty thousand elderly recipients are receiving two thousand six hundred plus, the normal rate. If you could just relax the limit of the means test, more elderly recipients can benefit. When it was first proposed in twenty seventeen policy address to raise the asset limit, we adopted a prudent approach because we do not have information about the assets owned by elderly people. Mr. Michael, look, four minutes. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on two one eight. About the recognition scheme of RCHs or accreditation. At the moment, only eighty-one RCHs out of the five hundred plus took part in the accreditation program. The government is going to step up its efforts in promoting this accreditation. My question is this. After accreditation, secretary, in your view, how will the service quality be enhanced and by how much? Because you seem to have great confidence that all RCHs can be accredited without extra manpower needed to help them through the accreditation process. I don't know whether it is really as easy as that to be accredited because I think accreditation should go hand in hand with the enhanced bought place scheme. If the RCH is not accredited, no place should be bought from that RCH by the government. Now, there are problems surrounding accredited RCHs. For example, for homes under the enhanced bought place scheme, the vacancy rate tends to be higher. But after all, the government has bought all the places, and it's about taxpayers' money. That means on average, a taxpayer will need to pay eight thousand dollars for a place in subsidy. And if an elderly person decides to take up an EA one place, the elderly person will not be eligible for subvented home, that is government-run homes. So how can you attract more people to use EBPS homes? Can this be addressed through the accreditation scheme? So that you can encourage more users to use the bought places instead? Because in five years, you are going to increase five thousand places. Why don't you just spend the money on subvented homes? About enhanced bought place scheme and the utilization rate, it's about ninety-two percent. It is a rather stable figure, which is quite high. And we've been doing our level best. If you have been monitoring the average waiting time for EBPS homes, the waiting time is getting longer. Previously, it was nine or eight months, and now it's eleven months. And that is why we need to buy more places so as to shorten the queue for EBPS. The problem is elderly participants and the family members are not happy with the quality of the bought places. They'd rather go for subvented homes. So how can you guarantee that the accreditation scheme can help boost the service quality of enhanced bought place scheme homes? Because I see the answer is rather vague. You don't need extra manpower for the accreditation, and it seems all homes can be accredited. Secretary, I can only briefly explain to the member about the accreditation scheme. In the past, it was done on a smaller scale because the accreditation comes with a price, some fifty thousand dollars. Normally, the private RCHs would be reluctant to fork out the money. That's why after we introduce a five-year program, we hope to reduce this overhead of fifty thousand dollars to encourage more private homes to take part in the accreditation program. In the future, when we are to buy homes, we do consider whether the home is accredited. So not for the sake of accreditation, how can you make sure that after the home is accredited, service quality can indeed be improved so that more elderly people would join the bought places? But if they meet the criteria, they will be accredited. Mr. Michael Tian, four minutes. Secretary, over here. For the childcare services, for the, for co-working parents, the support center. Well, I don't know. The problem remains. I don't know whether it has to do with high rental and high living expenses. Many parents are forced to join the workforce, or I'm talking about community nannies. We don't have sufficient space, and we don't have sufficient social workers. And according to your reply in twenty-five, I am disappointed, or two five one, I'm disappointed. You have the allocation, but I question the figures. Say for community nanny, I say that they should go for promotional development, professional development if they want to work for child, as childcare worker in the long run. Say if you take a child, pick up a child after school, it takes about five hours, and you have twenty-two school days a month, taking minimum wage rate thirty-seven point five dollars. Or let's say thirty-six, thirty-seven dollars, because it's different from part-time, we're talking about four thousand dollars. Four thousand dollars a month, I think it would be a respectable part-time, stable job. At least the child carers can stay home without having to go about town. And then the shortfall, combining all districts, there is a shortfall of thirteen thousand four hundred and ten. That's the figure from SWD, but at the moment, the figure is one thousand eight hundred, short of eleven thousand. That's for recurring spending. We're talking about some five hundred million dollars. That means eleven, twelve thousand potential child carers will be incentivized to join the work. As they would be given stable, long-term wages. I think as a long-term initiative, you can do something about it to go for professional development because there will be a greater demand for childcare. So secretary, my question is this, about professionalizing this line of work, you say a study is needed. And this is quite a substantial amount of money. I'd just like to know your thinking. That is eleven thousand, what is your response to the figure? Secretary, as we mentioned previously, in the coming year, we are going to adjust the rates. And we have, we consulted the users and the community nannies before. And we believe that if we take a gradual approach to enhance our services, it would be more appropriate. Mister Michael Tian asked whether we can have professional development. In fact, in the community, we already have full-time child carers who are paid to take care of children of other families. I think that we should have a discussion on whether we should have professional development. I'd like to ask about ninety-two to ninety-four, about one social worker per school. And then without consultation, all of a sudden, you implemented the policy of two school social workers for each school. I wonder if this is a result of Lam Lam's case, the tragedy. Because after you implement the policy of two school social workers for each school, we have received complaints from teachers in schools, teaching staff, and also social workers without a university degree. And their complaint is that they could be displaced. And after school principals receive your circular, they start to hire only social workers with a recognized social science degree or social work degree. And I really have great sympathy for them. These social workers have been serving schools for many years and receiving meager wages. And all of a sudden, they will be phased out. Have you considered the implementation problems with two school social workers for each school? And have you assessed whether there is a sufficient supply from universities? In terms of quantity and quality, will the policy of two school social workers for each school be implemented and meeting the demand? Well, in fact, about the new policy, we're talking about increasing the ratio of social workers versus school from one point two to two. That is about secondary schools. As for primary school, one school social worker per school. And the issues arising from it, counselors, teachers, and social workers without a degree. I think this should be dealt with by the Education Bureau. I think it just won't do, secretary, if you pass it back to the Education Bureau. There should be coordination between the bureaus. Let me explain, in this policy address, we're referring to two school social workers for each secondary school. This is under our purview. Last year, in the budget, one social worker per primary school was introduced. Regarding the problems and the complaints raised by council and social workers, it happened at the primary school level, and indeed, the SWD played no part in it. I just want to explain, and I will relay the concern to the Education Bureau. What about the new policy, has it to, in kindergartens, is it to do with the Lam Lam case? First, I found it quite peculiar, why kindergarten pupils will need the counseling?
This was proposed in last year's budget, and indeed, it was related to child abuse. So were these, are these social workers responsible for counseling the students or the parents? Apart from personal counseling, very often, the social workers have to deal with family problems, especially for kindergarten students. I want to ask about elderly care as well. In replies to both my questions, the government mentioned the navigation scheme and the number of service places, but they did not explain how many people received training and what the, what was the percentage of people who left? So for the two cohorts, how many young people participated? And how many of them left? Well, these are questions ninety-three and ninety-four. In the reply to the question, we mentioned the navigation scheme for young persons in care services. We have provided one thousand training places starting from twenty fifteen to sixteen. And we also advised a number of students who remained in the scheme. But since a large proportion of the students left, well, Mister Pun proposed phasing the salary and slashing the working hours. And by refining the scheme, we hope to appeal to more young people. Doctor Helena Wong, thank you. I asked about the childcare services, and the secretary said the government commissioned a childcare consultancy study with HKU, and the study was completed at the end of last year. Can you share the report with us? The report was open, and while we are yet to receive a copy of the consultancy report. It was uploaded online, so perhaps we can share the link with you. Thank you very much. I want to ask questions about women's rights. This is question thirty-one and question thirty. Question thirty-one is about the representation of female members in advisory and statutory bodies. In the annex, we see a list of ASBs with a proportion of female appointed less than thirty-five percent. So there are certain ASBs with zero appointment percentage, and there are twenty-eight of them. In other words, in these bodies, there is not a single appointed female non-official member. I would like to know the difficulties encountered by the government. Are people reluctant, or can you not identify any female members? Or do you need help from us? Can we recommend ourselves? If an ASB cannot appoint any female non-official members, would you set a deadline by which they must hire a female non-official member? So for the gender focal point, which is in question thirty, you would designate one officer in each department. So for these gender focal points, are you going to offer training in gender sensitivity? For example, they should at least know what is meant by a gender checklist and how it can be utilized. They need some training in gender sensitivity. So are you going to train all the GFPs? For the first question, as we said earlier today, we have a list that shows the number of ASBs with the female appointment ratio of less than thirty-five percent or even zero. But please be aware that in most cases, we can only change memberships when their term is up, and we cannot change too many members at one go. For some bodies or industries, the number of women is limited. But nonetheless, we would encourage that the ASBs appoint more female members. As for the gender focal points, in civil service training, we would provide gender mainstreaming training to civil servants every year. And we encourage GFPs from different bureaus and departments to take part. Doctor Wong. The secretary did not say whether they would welcome self-recommendations so that more female members would be appointed. We have a self-recommendation scheme for young people. And we have young men and young women. So we would encourage the government bureaus to consider appointing more female members. Doctor Fernando Chang. Every time when we ask about the waiting time, well, we often talk about waiting times becoming longer and longer, and more people are passing away while waiting. And every time the government would say there is a shortage of land, and very often, the work would take at least ten years. Ten years ago, Matthew Chang was a secretary for layman welfare, and since he was promoted. And now this is none of his business anymore. And the government would say that they cannot hire enough people, while they have been repeating the same answer since the handover. We asked whether they have specific objectives, they said it is hard to say, and there is no timetable as well. Well, Chairman, you are a businessman, is this what would happen in a business environment? There is no target, no timetable. We are talking about very basic services for our most vulnerable people. The waiting times are longer and longer. And very often, nothing would happen after those promises. We put these questions to you at the Finance Committee every single year, and the numbers are getting uglier by the year. So how many more years do we have to wait? They refuse to set timelines or targets, and they would only say that they would do their best. So the government is not doing anything meaningful. We won't take that for an answer. I'd like to talk about zero zero seven one on children, for services for children with mild mental handicaps or small group homes for mentally handicapped children. These are children who are not, who cannot be taken care of by their family, and they have mental handicaps. You're asking them to wait three years, even their family members cannot take care of them. And they have been proved by assessment that they cannot stay at home, and why are you asking them to wait three years? For question seventy-seven, you can see that the waiting time for children under six with severe handicaps, the waiting time is six years. Well, Chairman, I ask the same questions every single year, and yet they refuse to give an answer. So will this continue next year? These are, these people are made to wait every single year. Is this what we are going to do? Is this how we tackle issues in our society? Secretary? Well, I would repeat what's been said already. We would adopt a multi-pronged approach in introducing more facilities. As these projects complete, I hope that the waiting times could be reduced. Well, but this is not the case for the Hong Kong Jiamakau Bridge or the Express Rail Line. With the Shatin Central Link, with the fast now, you say that it will be completed. But why aren't you striving to complete these projects? You never had any problems with selling land. But why are we seeing a constant shortage of such facilities? Mister Roy Kwong. I want to follow up on question sixty-four. First of all, for subvented homes, as of the end of last year, the waiting time was thirty-six months. So the waiting time was getting longer and longer, and it was an alarming trend. When we look at twenty seventeen to eighteen, the waiting time was thirty-six months, and it is getting longer. Apparently, the paper did not show how many elderly people passed away while waiting. And this is something we must deal with, since the waiting times are getting longer, and many people have died while waiting. How are we going to deal with this? I wonder if the secretary has any figures to share, to show how many people passed away while waiting? Well, this has been repeated in a number of questions. Well, question number sixty-four. The waiting time was thirty-eight months. The waiting time was very long. And some people passed away while waiting. Does the government or does the secretary have any plans apart from actively identifying sites? How would you deal with the deteriorating waiting time? On the short run, we can introduce more places through the board play scheme, and we can introduce five thousand places in the next five years, which is equivalent to fifty RCHs. And in our information to be submitted to the welfare services panel, we will commission seventeen facilities within the next year, which will set a record. But if through the board places, we can provide enough, we can provide services equivalent to fifty homes, that would be an achievement. We can only provide figures for the next five years. As you know, for nursing home places, the waiting time has shortened to twenty-two months. Ten years ago, the waiting time for nursing homes was six, was seven to eight years. So our strategy is to give priority to elderly people with So our strategy is to um give priority to um elderly people with um more urgent needs in our care homes. But of course, um this is not ideal still and we would try to slash the time even further.
I hope Secretary would understand because every elderly applicant waiting for a home. Is a needy elderly. They may not have too much life left to wait for a place. If I am correct, according to media reports, every year, some three thousand elderly applicants would pass away whilst waiting for a home. Close to ten percent. The problem is, even so. The waiting time continues to get longer. Secretary, you must address the issue. There must be more effective ways of shortening the queue. Mr. Long Chi Chang, four minutes.
Chairman. Let me refer to the serial number first. About women's interests, I ask a question. One four one. About women's rights. I asked about the spending on services. And I also asked whether you have specific details, but you gave a very vague answer. You referred to the policy. It's about gender equality. Well, even the chief executive is a woman and we also have state leaders who are women. But in terms of services for women, I don't see any breakthrough in particular in empowering women. So I'd like to know whether you have any concrete proposals. Another question. This budget refers to the twenty billion dollar scheme to procure. Accommodations for service facilities. My question is where? Will you consider all eighteen districts? There are a number of more prominent districts, say, the Yunnan Tianshuai, the families tend to be younger. And will you consider enhancing the service of childcare? That will that be, will it be proportionate? In other words, we're going to have additional resources for the Women's Commission this year to carry out the relevant work. We hope to enhance the effort in promoting women's rights. As for the twenty billion dollars, as I already replied, more information will be furnished later. Definitely, it will involve all eighteen districts because all districts. Are short of facilities or premises for facilities. When considering procuring accommodation for childcare centers, of course, we will consider the feat, the characteristics of the districts. Then will you consult the, with the district councils? This is groundbreaking. I support your initiative. The point is how you are going to meet the local demand. The SWD may give you some district-based figures. But their statistics may not be the same as the district council's views. I don't want to discuss with you where you will make procurement. Will you discuss with the district councils? As you know, accountable officials have been visiting district councils and listening to the views of district councillors. In terms of enhancement of service, I also hear some views. We are still collecting information and we also have district offices responsible for collecting views. When it comes to the actual procurement. We may have a target. But at this moment, we are not sure. Exactly when or how many will be procured. It is difficult to give you these these details now. We don't want to promise, say, um how many will be procured and then we will need to meet or catch a target. We'll try to our level best and try to provide as many service units as possible to the community. Next, Dr. Helena Wong.
I ask about the ASBs, advisory and statutory bodies and the female-appointed non-official members. The answer for some of them is zero. And I asked the government whether there are ways to increase the proportion of female members. For youths, well, Secretary mentioned that they have a youth self-recommendation scheme. My question for the administration is that you see twenty-eight ASBs without any female members. And also a list, a long list of ASBs not meeting the target of thirty-five percent. Will you set a target? Say, for the next term of appointment, will you encourage members of the public, women in particular, to make recommendations? Or to recommend themselves so that next time around, you can field sufficient candidates? You explained why some of them had zero, zero female members. Say, for licensed plumbers in certain industries, I do agree that it's quite difficult to field female candidates. What about water quality monitoring committee? I don't think we are short of women interested in this topic. I am also a woman. I am paying close attention to the matter and I also receive comments from females about this. Is it that you will only find those women who would agree with the government? And that you would only feel candidates from the pro-establishment camp? Otherwise, I do think that you have a lot of choices. What about the uh management committee of the Fund for Widows and Orphans? I have been asking this question for so many years. Over the years, the figure has always been zero. You have, you appointed no women um member. And also Chonghua Group of Hospital. I don't know why. This is just an advisory structure. It is impossible not to find any women to sit on board. And also the committee about AIDS and also about the conduct of the teaching professionals. We have so many. Uh women in the sector. It is impossible not to have female members. I want to know whether you have any plan to improve the current situation. I will reflect members' views to the relevant bureau for consideration. So that means you will consider the self-recommendation scheme. Is that right? I will relay your view to other bureaus. I have another question, WW zero zero three two. Um the question that I put in about the Women's Commission. Whether the government will consider upgrading the Women's Commission? When we signed this, signed the CDO, um there is a stipulation that there should be a central committee providing advice to the government. According to the administration, Women's Commission is now a high-level commission. And nothing more should be done. I don't agree. Although the Women's Commission is appointed by the Chief Executive, the work is mostly about giving um. It's about uh labor and welfare and the other, and the way Labor and Welfare Bureau provides secretarial support. So I don't think we should stay at the level of um of a bureau. It should come under, for example, um. The Chief Secretary for Administration or even directly under the Chief Executive. So we have thirteen policy bureaus. And if women's, this Women's Commission only comes under one bureau. It may not have teeth. Well, please uh press a button, wait for another round. Ms. Yunus Young. I have three oh five, three oh four and three oh six. I'd like to follow up on these three questions about childcare. According to your reply, childcare center comes with charges. We understand that. I also pay a hefty fee. At the moment, I have a young child. I pay six thousand to eight thousand dollars a month on average. So it's really expensive. According to your reply, you will increase the level of subsidy to lessen the burden uh on the financial burden of families. The recurrent spending would be around five, fifty-two million dollars. So. How much subsidy will be given per child? Because at the moment, I'm paying six thousand to eight thousand dollars for my child. Next, about the Neighborhood Community Care Support Scheme and the child carers. In Central and Western District, there are only twenty-one child carers. In Kowloon City, there are four hundred and sixty Shamshur Po, um more child carers. My question is about the incentive payment. It's just eighteen to twenty-three dollars. Isn't it too um, too meager? Although you mentioned it is done on a voluntary, voluntary basis. I do believe if you meet with the representatives, they would like to have a raise uh, uh, they have a rise as well. So will you consider increasing the incentive payment to a reasonable level? Uh next question about mutual help childcare centers. The utilization rate at the moment is on the low side. There are nineteen MHCCs across the territory. Despite the low utilization, you continue to deploy more staff. Have you found out why? I see that there are many quotas for each center. Only twelve to thirteen preschool children places will be provided per center. Can you increase uh the number? And you ta- also talk about transformation. Have you discussed with the service organizations? Can you give us some rough idea? Chairman, about the level of subsidy. In the coming year. We plan to raise the level of subsidy to about forty percent. The most important point about the level of subsidy is that because of the staffing ratio having been raised. The cost of operation also increases. Earlier, we all, we explained at uh the Panel on Welfare Services that. At the moment, we're not able to cut down fees. We can only suppress the uh increase in charges. As mentioned by the honorable member, um the charges and fees are on the high side. It is quite a financial, uh quite a burden on even the middle-income families. And we have a mechanism for preschool children. Under the mechanism. We would consider how we can give better support to the middle-income group to lessen the burden. Is it possible to gradually increase the level of subsidy? Well, this is something that we'll explore in the future. About child carers under the uh. And CCP. We also consider increasing the or adjusting the incentive payment for child carers to improve the situation. Well, indeed, we encounter difficulties in certain districts, in Central and Western, for example. The point is, we do not have a lot of child carers. About the Mutual Help Childcare Center, it will be consolidated or re-engineered in the future. About enhancing the service, well, we believe that it is a vicious circle. With insufficient manpower, they are unable to provide stable service. And it's a vicious circle. That is why re-engineering is needed. We need to solve the manpower issue. We also need to adjust the services. Uh very often, as we all know, kindergarten's um on a half day, uh half-day basis. So we need to enhance after-school childcare. And this is something that the MHCCs can do. And after we iron out the details, we can um give you more details.
Dr. Fernando Chang, four minutes. The secretary said that some five thousand bought places would be introduced in the five year, next five years. But as I understand. Places are being bought from private homes. In other words, facilities that are already in operation. These are not new places. Well, please correct me if you were talking about new places. Under EBPS. There are fifteen thousand odd places in total. So among the fifteen thousand odd places, how many of them are introduced um due to your new plans? Our goal is to introduce one thousand places per year in the next five years. I understand that there are less than five thousand places currently available that meet our standards. So through the bought places scheme. We can encourage private homes to do better because the government might purchase their places. However, we are yet to carry out the work, so I cannot offer an answer. The bought place scheme is not new. You have um purchased fifteen thousand places. My point is, you cannot um tackle the shortage of places through the five thousand bought places. Your move might um help enhance the quality of some private homes. But this is not the same as introducing more places. These are two different things. When we talk about a shortage of places and you told us that you will buy five thousand places in the next five years, well, these are two completely different things. These five thousand places already exist in the market. You are just some buying the, um, you are just buying them. So do not um mislead the public into thinking that the number of extra places would be akin to fifty new homes. This is not the case. I asked about the integrated home care services. Under the scheme, um many services do not require professionals, including meal delivery, um home cle- cleansing services. Taking um a shower for the elderly people or frail persons. Outpatient escort services, et cetera. You always talk about a shortage of hands and you said the NGOs could not hire enough people. While the, if you offer more money, you can overcome this problem. You should try to allow the um elderly people and PWDs to stay at home if they can enjoy um. Outpatient escort services or meal deliveries, they would not have to um use institutional care. The sixty outreach um home services teams have not been reinforced for years. Like we said, through the five thousand extra bought places. Well, the increase in allocation for home care services is about twenty-eight percent. By allocating extra resources to NGOs, we can allow them to hire more people. In twenty thirteen, the HKCSS and other bodies carried out a study. And the study found that the shortage of frontline workers was about twenty-eight percent. When a- another study was conducted in twenty seventeen, the shortage was, or the shortfall was about eighteen percent. So since last year, we have been providing extra resources to these NGOs so that they can offer high salaries to their frontline workers. And we hope that the um research and analysis can be completed sooner. To help the recruitment situation. Mr. Roy Kwong. I want to follow up on question two one six. I want to follow up on question two one six. On the um situation with certificates of exemptions in some care homes. In twenty sixteen. One of the, there was an incident with an elderly home. And um it showed that many care homes were operating on COEs. And currently, one hundred and twenty eight, twenty nine homes are operating on COEs. And in twenty sixteen. At a council meeting, Mister Matthew Chang said. All the um ho- homes operating with a COE could be phased out and um they would. In other words, they would be fully licensed. So my first question is whether you, whether the government is able to meet this very aggressive target. We hope that by the end of the year, the relevant. RCHDs would be licensed. For those who still hold COEs, um the. Problem um usually lies with the um. Retrofitting. Many of them would have to be modified before they can be licensed. I cannot guarantee whether all of them can meet our requirements, but we will do our best. Well. Well, if you tell me that um tomorrow, all the RCHDs in Hong Kong could be licensed, um it might sound great. But um there could be some hidden concerns. So for RCHDs um eligible for a license, can you ensure that? They would not be licensed till they attain those standards? Well, this is for sure. Civil servants play by the rules. So um. Licenses would only be granted if the RCHDs fulfill all requirements. I want to ask about question three oh five about the home based child carers. Many people told us that um these home based carriers are very helpful. But the problem is they are virtually volunteers. So we have talked about um improving. Their benefits, at least they should be protected by minimum wage. This is still under debate, but I a- apparently. The century does not want to make these um child carers employees. Very often, these home carriers are um basically volunteers. So the professional service is not um stable. So. How would you provide a greater incentive for people to um become child carers? In terms of the um care allowance, it would be adjusted in order to um increase the appeal. I met some home based child carers. Well, they are volunteers who love children. They have um enormous passion towards children. Well, if I have small kids, I would be happy to um give my children to them. However, if this becomes an occupation, the level of regulation must be much higher. Currently, um they operate as volunteers. Of course, we will try to um avoid um. Incidents by enhancing training and we hope to increase the um supply by stepping up. Promotion. The speakers of the microphone. Doctor Fernando Chang. Chairman, I want to follow up on the factory for the blind on question fifty five. After. It was rebuilt, the factory for the blind. Was gone. We met earlier. And the. LWB SWD and the um Society for the Blind. Promise that um the jobs of the blind people would not be lost. We asked about the number of um workers since twenty fourteen to fifteen. There were sixty five and now there are only fifty five. Or ten people less. So in a two hundred worker factory, only few of them are paid workers. In terms of employment for PWDs. We want to um. Give them um formal employment in which they would be reasonably paid and they can become independent. And this is about the employment rights and dignity. However, the um numbers were dropping. If we have to wait another four or five years before the factory is rebuilt, um their plan is to relocate it to Tun Moon. So. A number of the fifty workers currently might be reluctant to go to Tun Moon. And um due to the difficult circumstances, some these workers cannot continue and the number of um workers is dropping. This is contrary to the policy direction I propose. Which is to promote employment among PWDs. I would like to know the LWB's views on this. So um if these fifty five workers are eventually phased out. Would they no longer be um formally employed? Would they become um interns? At the new facility and they would be, they would receive twenty six point five dollars per day, which is not enough. Which is not even enough for their meals. Chairman. The government um has put a lot of focus on helping. PWDs find employment in terms of supporting um. PWDs and offering support. We um help PWDs find employment in various ways. As for the factory for the blind, I have no details on hand, but as you know. Hong Kong has lost one million factory workers since the nineteen seventies. And um I think the Hong Kong Society for the Blind faces operational challenges in operating its factory. But they are doing their very best to identify jobs. I think um we have to look at the developments of society before we can say whether um such jobs are available. We have identified a, an area in proximity so that the factory can be relocated there instead of to Tun Moon. Once it is confirmed, we will update the public. Mister Peter Shu, four minutes. This session is on welfare and women. But as you know, the cost of living in Hong Kong is very high, including housing. Many um grassroots face enormous problem, even though we represent the business sector. We think the government should support needy people. And in terms of um housing schemes. CSA, et cetera, the government should support its people. As much as possible and we are fully supportive.
Well, universal retirement and a um broad brush brush hat out of three thousand dollars per person. I think that three thousand dollars or six thousand, seven thousand, we support that. But money should only be given to the needy. We know in Hong Kong, there are people receiving CSA. And we have the old and frail, the disabled, single parents. Undoubtedly, we should help the disadvantaged. But we also receive complaints about those in their thirties. They are of very strong build and then they are unemployed and they are on the dole. And then we receive complaints from their neighbors that we see them all the time and join themselves in Chinese restaurants. So for those abusing the CSA system. I'd like to know if the SSWD has looked into the matter and whether you have figures. Well, if any applicant deliberately provides. False information. And practicing deception, the SWD will instigate prosecution. For able bodied CSA recipients, they would need to join the uh employment support scheme. So that our team can assist them in securing employment. Together with the Labor Department and the Employment Retraining Board, we consider how we can do better. To help able bodied recipients. To find work suitable for them. And we have been sparing no effort in improving this. Any figures, any figures, secretary? About the adult able bodied CSA recipients. Committing deception, any prosecution figure? I'll defer to the director. We have been. Taking a rigorous enforcement uh effort. We act on complaints. Well, about CSA, about the number of complaints, our reports, we have one thousand one hundred and four. Substantiated deception cases to the two hundred and ninety one. And we do follow up on these cases, all of them. That's very good. One thousand one hundred and out of that, some two thousand cases. That means some twenty thirty percent. Some twenty thirty percent of these recipients are uh unscrupulous. I mean, we have. Two hundred thousand such cases. I'm just talking about the complaint cases. That means you receive complaints. And then out of these complaints, some twenty percent. Are substantiated. Don't defend them. Allocate more resources to check them. Doctor Fernando John. Factory for the Blind. Secretary mentioned that the factory mode of operation is already been under challenge. It is questionable whether we can continue to operate the premises as a factory. We all understand that the in- industrial base in Hong Kong is dwindling. It is difficult to go on like this. But we're talking about the only available um workplace as. The chief of the Labor and Welfare Bureau, I hope you'll consider. That it is a sheltered working environment, a subsidized environment. For the people with a lesser edge to be given job opportunities. Of course, we need the, we need support from you financially. Other or otherwise, to provide these job opportunities. For example, you can stipulate um the uh procurement, uh government procurement from these. From the factory. Of course, this is not impossible. Social enterprise is also heading in this direction. So don't tell us that the industrial base is dwindling. And all factories, including the factory for the blind, can no longer survive. I'm still referring to fifty five. There are twenty uh two hundred and four workers at the moment, but after redevelopment, there will. Only be one hundred places for integrated vocational rehabilitation service centers. Which means half of these workers would be phased out. What is the reason? Why is it that over half of these workers or or trainees will. No longer need the service after redevelopment? Secretary. Chairman, uh me, if I could be given some time for my colleagues from the SWD to give you some more information. Deputy Director. Well, under the special scheme, we discussed with the organizations what services will be provided. About the new service quarters, we are conducting a study before we reach a conclusion. So we will further discuss with the organizations. But we believe what you've put down in black and white, and now you tell me that you will have further discussions with them. Which version is true? Are you going to consider afresh our proposal? Can you guarantee first of all that the workers and trainees? After redevelopment will definitely secure a place there, should they choose to receive service? Second. You cannot lower the proportion of paid workers vis a vis service users. Can you guarantee that? Can you, don't take away their job opportunities? Let me take the latter question. We can guarantee that for existing. Employees. We guaran- uh we promise that through the Society for the Blind will continue to employ. Uh the paid workers. But in the future. If the number increases substantially, we cannot guarantee that the proportion can be maintained. I mean, we'll try our best to maintain the same proportion. Mister Jeremy Tam. My question is three three three. About the public transport concessionary fare for the elderly scheme. I'd like to know the impact of the scheme on our traffic. And transport. I'm disappointed. I'm not asking about. Weekdays. I'm asking about. I I'm not asking exactly when the passenger trips take place. I'm asking break uh weekdays and holidays, public holidays, et cetera. Well, um for uh passenger trips. On MTL, some three hundred thousand for buses, some five hundred thousands. I'm disappointed in your answer. Because you need to consider the in- impact on the current transport and traffic. Let's say in future, if you have a plan to further reduce the fee to one dollar or to make it free of charge. Then perhaps you can provide extra concession during non-peak hours. To alleviate burden on our traffic. I'm not suggesting that uh you should do so. I'm just saying that at least you should conduct an analysis so that you know the exact impact on our transport. Talk about smart uh transport, big data. Smart city. I'm asking a very simple question. In fact, I should have asked. Uh the period of time uh of the passenger trips during a day. If you are not able to do that now in the coming year, will you be able to have this uh data? So that next year, when I ask the same question again, you won't give me the same. So that next year, when I ask the same question again, you won't up, give me the same answer. This question is about whether this information is available. Indeed, we do not have this information, and it's as explained previously. We are conducting a relevant review of the scheme. We hope by the beginning of next year, we will have more information, which will help us with the review. Mister Jeremy Tam just now referred to say whether different concessions can be offered during different times of the day to encourage, say, elderly people to take transport during non-peak hours. We are aware of these comments in the current exercise and will consider what will be the best way forward. Understand, secretary. Of course, this is only reasonable. What is unreasonable is that you have not kept the data. Because in the beginning of next year, when at this moment you are thinking about a review or an adjustment to the policy, I'm just curious. I am rather disappointed. At this day and age, in Hong Kong, we have the technology, and such data should have been available on request. Even if you can't tell us uh on the spot, uh we put in the question earlier, and you should have been able to retrieve data. It really shows what the problem is. How can you formulate any policy without data? How can you assess whether the existing policy works or not? You're just making wild guesses. So act now. Keep data. Take a look at the different time periods during the day and uh and the passenger uh travel pattern. Through the consultancy study, chairman, we will see what information will be most helpful in the analytical work. Well, we had to answer over one thousand three hundred questions within a short period of time. We are therefore unable to provide an answer. I used to be a electrical member back then. And in fact, uh I've never seen an answer called that we do not keep um data for this answer. We, we need and uh we can do analysis, but not at this moment. Mister Long Yu Chong. I'd like to follow up on zero, zero, five, six. About integrate, uh enhanced home and community care services, E H C C S. According to their reply, between twenty fourteen, fifteen and twenty eighteen, nineteen, the waiting uh ti- uh the people on the waiting list have increased from two thousand six hundred to seven thousand eight hundred. The average waiting time also continues to increase from nine months in twenty fourteen to eighteen months now. So my question is whether there are measures to shorten the waiting time? And second, whether this information is available? Can you give us a breakdown um by district of the waiting time? Um which district has the longest waiting time and what is the government's responsive action? In fact, it's in our written reply, we do not have the information at hand. We are unable to provide the breakdown as member has requested. Mister Long referred to twenty eighteen, nineteen as at the end of December twenty eighteen, the number of persons waitlisted was seven thousand eight hundred. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, in the coming financial year, in terms of the enhanced or E H C C S, we're going to provide two thousand additional places, up by about twenty-eight percent. We hope uh we can effectively alleviate the pressure on the waiting queue. But because of waiting, uh of the aging population, inevitably, uh we have a vast number of applicants every year. In other words, are you going to enhance your service teams? Because uh over the years, you have had sixty. Are you going to increase the number? On E H C C, uh C S S, we have um we would deploy additional resources to increase the service capacity. That means without increasing the number of teams, we'll still be able to meet the service demand. We think the number of teams is another issue. All we need is manpower and uh increased service level. And the additional resources will mean there'll be two thousand additional places. We may not need to increase the number of teams. Every time we introduce a new team, there is problem with, say, division of work. So we'd rather increase resources uh for the existing service units.
Our society has changed. There are now communities at remote areas or at the hills, and it is very hard to um allocate manpower for the service teams, and they would have to spend more time and effort in visiting those areas. If you don't introduce more teams, you cannot help the public. So why wouldn't you review the number of teams? Last year, we um approved under the early services program plan that in terms of um improving the integrated homes, home care service and communicate, community care service teams, um there is some degree of redundancy. And um we would streamline the scope of work so that the um staff would not have to go too far. Finally, Doctor Fernando Chang. Thank you. I want to ask about the inspection of R C H Ds. This is question one oh four. The annex shows that you make about two thousand inspections per year. The number of non-compliance cases um went from thirty-six in twenty sixteen to seventeen to sixteen and seventeen to eighteen, and only two in twenty eighteen to nineteen. Apparently, it was a big improvement. But um I made visits um myself to these um residential care homes, and I did not see much improvement. I visited care homes recently. I would still describe these facilities as hell. And a number of them were reported. And um in uh recently, there was an incident in which um two residents in a care home beat each other up, and they had to be separated by staff. And um there is a great spectrum of um residents in these care homes. Some of them are rather independent, or they can even go to work while some need different degrees of care. At some care homes, um there is not even a single social worker to follow up on the cases. So um at private care homes, are you aware of the um needs or conditions of the residents? And how many, how many of them are receiving daycare services? Well, there are cases in which um the residents are not allowed to leave the care home since they are deemed not fit to do so by the management or family members. We have no such figures, but we will introduce more professional outreach teams to offer support services to care homes, including R C H Ds. For private R C H Ds, we hope to know more about their operation soon. He talked about the consultancy study in response to Mrs. Yucashen. The secretary said the focus is on regulation or surveillance. What exactly are you going to monitor? Director? Like the secretary said, the consultancy study is irrelevant to the review of um conditions such as per capita space. Um the consultancy study is mainly on the licensing regime of the S W D and what can be improved in the future. Or whether we can establish any um quality indicators. What kind of mechanism were you referring to? The licensing regime. What are you trying to um achieve by reviewing the licensing regime? We have private homes, subvented homes, as well as R C H Ds and R C H Ds, and we carry out inspections um through different teams. We have a dedicated team to handle complaints. And we would follow up on um exceptional cases. And we would also um deal with the licensing regime of R C H Ds. So in the future, well, there would be regulation on the entire regime. The next session will start at six.